Go ahead and call BUHS number six meeting for October 2nd to order at seven o'clock. And before we go into our regular things, because we do have a new board member joining us, I thought it would be good for us to all introduce ourselves to her and have her introduce herself to us. So why don't we start this end and kind of work our way around?
Sure.
Steve Perrin, Principal of High School.
Michael Burnett, Director of the Career Center.
Frank Rucker, this is Mr. Strayer.
Ricky Davidson, Chair of the Board.
Mark Woodworth, representing Brattleboro.
Matt Collier, Vernon.
Sean Mervin, Guilford.
Russ Janis, Brattleboro.
And Andy in Putney.
Thank you.
And you, Tori, Brattleboro.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm Katie Everest. We recently, well, in June, moved from Dummerston to Brattleboro. And I was on the Board of Dummerston School for five years. And I'm happy to be able to fill this position that's open and excited to learn about this board process.
Excellent. And Keith Lyman, the Principal of Bams, just joined us.
Hi.
Sorry, I'm late. All right, so let's move into Clerk's Report. And is there a motion to approve the minutes from our September 18th meeting?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to seconded? Any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes of the 18th? Seen none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed or retention?
Abstain.
Abstain.
I was absent.
You were absent, yes.
I was absent?
You were absent.
And I shall abstain.
Okay. Are you here tonight?
So I have a question. The last board meeting, I arrived a little bit late and you'd already done the minutes. And so I think Ian abstained because he had missed the previous.
Mm-hmm.
And I wasn't at the previous meeting also.
Okay.
So that was the 21st of September, or of August.
Of August, yeah.
Yeah. So I should have abstained.
Okay.
So I guess that is a correction.
All right.
You're back there with me. I'm jumping into the fray here.
Oh, that's right.
Katie abstaining, Michael abstaining.
That's neat, okay. Okay. Excellent. Okay, so we approved the minutes. Is there any other communications that came to board members that we need to talk about? Nothing? All right. Recognition of groups or individual visitors. We don't have any groups or visitors tonight. So is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
I move we enter consent agenda.
Second.
Moving to seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so let's start with finance, building, and transportation.
Okay. Switching hats here very quickly.
Thank you both.
Finance met just the other day, September 28th, and we approved warrants, numbers 1041 through 46, 1048 through 1050, and the amount of $875,572.31. We also approved September 18th warrants, numbers 1051 through 1053, 1055 through 1061, and the amount of $95,822.35. In addition, we approved four sets of payrolls. And if you'll bear with me for a second, I will find those. I just had that.
If they're not on the warrant, can we?
Yeah, we can still, we can still.
There we go. Payrolls for the week of August 18th, $416,445.33. Payrolls for the week of 9/1, $389,993.33. Payrolls for the week of 9/15, $421,216.24. And finally, week of 9/29, $421,222.70. In addition, at this meeting, we spent some time with Steve Perrin and Robert Clark, Director of Operations here, discussing the, what kind of long-term and perhaps partially short-term plan for campus improvements as it relates to Tenny Field, Natterwich Field, Practice Field. We've still collecting a little bit of information, but we had some good input. We're starting to kind of look at this as perhaps a three-part project, but all pieces tie together a little bit. So we didn't want to just look at part one and ignore the other parts. Part one being probably Tenny Field and the grandstand, which as we know is now closed, being deemed unsafe. So we talked about that for some, quite a bit. We are coming up on budgeting season, so we'll need to decide whether we were going to recommend something until it can be put into the capital plan for this coming year. It's not that far off. So we're moving ahead with that, moving ahead with discussing and trying to figure out the best route. We also signed memorandum, memo of understanding with folks at the West Stone Village Association who had stepped up and indicated that they would take over the dues, the annual dues, for the three lots that we own there. Again, thanks to Sean's great work. And so there was a memorandum of understanding drawn up, Frank, and we signed off on that. So as of this point, starting with the dues beginning of next year, we will not, for at least five years, be responsible for paying those dues on the lots that we don't use in return. We promise to leave them as green space for the duration of this memo of understanding. Let's see, I think that's pretty much the basics of the meeting, right?
I think so.
Yeah. Our next meeting, I guess we haven't definitely set that up yet, have we, Frank?
Right, yeah. I think the 19th is fine if our other members agree.
Yeah. If we did it this Thursday, we'd only be less than a week after our last meeting. So I think we're thinking about the 19th. The 19th, whatever the Thursday is after the next meeting.
Yep, it's the 19th.
19th, yeah. And that's the basics of finance activities.
Great. Thank you. WSCSU Finance Committee.
Hey, we haven't met since the last meeting. And as I mentioned last time, we are, the SU Finance Committee is having a meeting this Wednesday at 5:15. And then the full SU Board will be having a meeting at 6:30. And you're all invited. Besides food, there'll be a facilitator to help sort of reform the group and get us focused. And it will be at Alumni Hall at Landmark College. Does anybody know where Landmark, not where Landmark, where Alumni Hall is?
I couldn't find it on their map. I googled effectively where Alumni Hall was.
Does anybody know that?
No.
Okay. I mean, it'd be helpful then to get some directions out, or you can stand there with a sign or something.
Or you.
Yeah, or me, that's true. We can have the meeting out on the road. That would be good. Okay, that's it for now. I think Lyle said it was probably, it was in the same building or right in the same area as the cafeteria.
Oh, yeah, it's up on the hill.
So it's up on the hill.
Up on the hill.
So if you turn, when you turn into campus, you take the first left and you go around, and it's like the second or third building town, so. Okay. I think that's what she said, but we can verify that. Yeah, Sean?
I'm not sure that this would be the place to plug it in, but I was looking at the agenda for that meeting on Wednesday. And I would like to have a little discussion at this board level about that agenda.
Okay.
Is this appropriate time?
Why don't we plug that in under New Business?
Okay.
Tonight, so we'll get that conversation then.
All right.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, Planning and Policy has not met since our last meeting. Teacher Curriculum Committee.
We met today. The committee went down to Ben Lord's Science Room, and we talked about YATSE, YATSE, or YATS, or YATS, there was a discussion. It stands for Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together. And two ninth graders, first-year students Spencer and Deacon, helped present. And we engaged in a wagon wheel of discussions around the four core principles that they're looking at in terms of trying to engage students here at BUHS. And they will be, they're working on a survey to get a feeling for how students feel engaged here at BUHS, and then to take recommendations and actions. I believe they're meeting with teachers tomorrow and tech staff, hoping to get that off the ground by the end of the month. And I know they'll pass the survey to the Teacher Curriculum Committee and the Board as well, just before it will be sent off to all students during advisory is the intention. So it's a really impressive, students and the class seems really good what they're doing. And it'll be interesting to see where they take it.
Could you do that acronym again?
Y-A-T-S-E, which is Youth and Adults Transforming Schools Together. And while you're writing that down, the four, four basic tenets are relevance, relationships, rigor, and shared responsibilities. And we had little three, four-minute sessions on each one of those talking about that.
Together, that would be Y-A-T-S-E-T, okay.
T-S, Y-A-T-S-T.
Oh, T, okay.
T, together.
Y-A-T-S-T.
All right. Bams Committee.
Bams Committee has not met.
WRCC Committee.
The WRCC Committee met on Friday. And the two main things we discussed was Michael wants to move a par educator out of the culinary program for now because he doesn't need it, and replace it with a par educator for the automotive program. Believe the position's been posted, yes?
Not yet.
Okay. He will post it, and we approved of it. More importantly, I think, he has decided he'd like to formulate a policy for program reviews. Programs come in and out of the Career Center based on enrollment. And this is another Tech Center's policy on how to determine which programs stay, which ones leave, which ones restart, and how to get teachers to develop their programs so they have more students, thus keeping their programs going. So he and Drew plan to adapt this and present it to us next time we meet, but we think it's a great idea. So.
Did I cover everything? I asked if I covered everything. We'll get Mike. Ricky, if I could just make one, just a quick question. If we're going to be talking at some point about the, what's happening on Wednesday, I've got to leave by eight, so I don't know when we're going to get to New Business. But if we can do it before that meeting, please. We'll do our best. Yeah, if you'd like to, okay. Excellent. WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee has not met since our last meeting, I don't believe. But I just wanted to let the Board and the public know about some upcoming information sessions prior to the election on November 7th. So on Monday, October 30th, there'll be an information session in Dummerston at about 6 o'clock, the Dummerston School. And then on Wednesday, November 1st, there'll be an information session in Brattleboro at Academy School. And then on the 2nd of November, there'll be an information session in Putney at 6 o'clock. And then on Monday, the 6th, so the day before Election Day, there will be a meeting in Guilford, information session in Guilford at 6 o'clock. So most of those are connected to or part of the regular school board meetings in those schools. But there'll be information sessions, one in each town, prior to the election on November 7th.
Is the Brattleboro Academy time the same?
About 6 o'clock, yes.
Okay.
And petitions were due today?
Petitions were due at 5 o'clock today for the new Unified District Board. Because on the ballot, essentially, I don't know the exact wording, but the way I understand it, there'll be the question of, do you approve of, or do you agree with the merger of these four towns into one unified district? Yes or no. And then you, and then after that will be something along those lines. If that unified district is approved, here's the people that are running for school board representatives for you. And then you vote for those people. And I know in Brattleboro, there were staggered, yeared seats, and it's in the other towns, too. Some are two years, some are three years, some are four years, just to get the process rolling for the first round.
Yeah, unfortunately, I called my town clerk and been in touch with my town clerk. And I think there's only been one petition submitted in Guilford, which is by me for the at-large position. And I think only one in Brattleboro, and I believe none in Dummerston. So I wasn't able to get a hold of the Putney Town Clerk, but.
As far as.
The interest has been.
Me.
Oh, you won. Good for you.
And I think Alice for the unified.
Yeah, I know Alice is running for the at-large.
And me.
And you, okay.
Yeah, so it's going to be a small board.
It could very well be.
Well, the other positions will have to be filled by the, by the towns there, so.
I haven't pointed yet. All right. So that's WSCSU Act 46. So is there anything else before consent agenda? Should I? All, every, all in favor of approving consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or retention? Excellent. All right, so administrative reports. We'll start at the far end and work our way this way this time.
Sure. Hi, everyone. We're probably fairly short tonight. Want to touch on a few things that have happened recently. The teachers and students have been dealing with some pretty extreme heat until the last few days. And I just wanted to commend all of them for persevering through it, because these upstairs classrooms get upper 80s and just really tough learning environment for everyone. And just wanted to commend everyone for getting through that because it was pretty challenging. Let's see, Team Draco, which is an eighth-grade team this year, it's half of the eighth grade, they, they've been fundraising and planning a trip to Cape Cod for at least six months, if not longer. And the idea being, instead of doing an end-of-eighth-grade big trip where you build all these relationships and then we send them off to high school, they, they wanted to do that after seventh grade, but really at the beginning of eighth grade. And it makes a lot of sense because they build a lot of relationships, student to student, student to adult, et cetera. And then they can carry those out for the remainder of the eighth-grade year. And so I was invited to go with, with Draco to the Cape. They chose, and those teachers have done trips to the Cape before with students, the last one being about 12 years ago or so. The, one of the cool things was Riley Gudmo, our music band teacher, was on the trip as a student, like 12 years ago. So he got to come back. And so it was not only the core teachers, but also the advisors. So like Riley is an advisor, as an exploratory teacher with Team Draco. So Riley went and special educators, there was a lot of staff that went with those 70, 75 students. And I was fortunate to go with them, and it was, it was an amazing time. We went to Cape Cod Sea Camps, which is in the summers. You can tell it's a busy place. I would say they have 200 or 300 campers there at any time. Just an amazing place in Brewster, Mass. And the, one of the best pieces of that, besides just the memories, there are so many kids who, who go to school here who have never, barely stepped outside of Brattleboro or the town that they live in. They certainly haven't seen the ocean before or been to that kind of a place. And it might be the only time they do it for quite a while, just they, they don't have the means to do that kind of stuff. So you have that factor, and then you add all the fun. And it was a very educational trip. I mean, Jake McDermott said to me, I cannot replicate the kind of things that we're doing here. And so I was with Jake, and we spent three days, my little group, the kids rotated through. And we had six groups, and they would rotate to a different activity each day, two activities a day. And we had them in the Salt Marsh in Eastham, Mass. Some people have probably been there, it's amazing. And we were kayaking and canoeing with the kids. And so they're, they're picking up horseshoe crabs and checking out the males and the females and checking out all the, it's really neat. And they had like a scavenger hunt kind of thing. So they got points awarded for finding different things, and all kinds of snails and clams. And it was just, it was amazing. And as they studied the tides and how they work against gravity, first day I was canoeing through this little channel. And it's in a marsh. And there were two gray seals that popped up right in front of me. I almost flipped over my canoe. I was so shocked. So it was just an amazing trip. And our kids really got a rich experience from that. And it generally went pretty well. We were a little late getting back to last night, but got to stay in, you know, a 12-person camp cottage. It was pretty, pretty neat, brought me back to my childhood. And we had to postpone that trip because of Hurricane or Tropical Storm Jose. The surf was incredible. Even last week, down on the Cape, the surf was 10, 12-foot waves, people out there surfing with gray seals right next to them. And I'm thinking, you're nuts with the sharks around there, but people were doing it. We had a bonfire on Coast Guard Beach. If people have been there, it was just, it was, it was a great time. Definitely the highlight for me this year. And Friday night, we had our first dance, the same team hosted that, all in the same week. And that was, that was interesting. It's always interesting, seventh graders, their first dance. And so it was a good time. Last but not least, Parent Night is this Wednesday evening. And if any of you're, you're all welcome to come and stop in if you'd like to check it out for a few minutes. It goes from 6:30 to 8:15. And basically, parents will go through their child's schedules that evening, about nine or 10 minutes per classroom and check it out. So that's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions.
Great. Thank you. All right, move to High School.
So, thanks. First of all, we are, BUHS Abroad is heating up already, and they are welcoming today 12 students and teachers from Leipzig, Germany. They'll be here for two weeks. We do the Welcome Breakfast tomorrow for our guests. Over the next two weeks, they're going to do things like pumpkin carving, Brattleboro Town Scavenger Hunt, haunted hay rides, and a trip to New York City. And, you know, we welcome them, and then we'll go over there as we do every few years, we'll go over to visit them as well. We have a great relationship with the school in Leipzig, and we've done this for many years. And it's almost like seeing an old friend when the teachers come over because they've been over, you know, since the early 2000s. So it's kind of great to see them every couple of years. So we're excited for that. We'll be having early release on Thursday. We'll have our Fall Parent Conferences. And we'll be releasing school at 12:30. The buses will run at normal time, including the mover. And we're trying something different this year. And rather than having the traditional stand in line and wait until you can see your teacher, we've gone to an online scheduler. We thought we'd try that process this year. And it's, it's had mixed results so far. We've had several parents call in and, and say, this is great, I love this, I'm going to be able to come in and see my, my students' teachers in a timely way without sitting waiting an hour to talk to Mr. Holliday, which is the positive. One parent asked me if they could have a tailgate party while they're waiting between conferences. And I said, probably not a great idea. Along those same lines, I've had some parents who have been unable to see popular teachers or teachers that had good classes. And, you know, that's unfortunate. We've encouraged those parents to make direct contact with teachers to schedule a time to have a conference. So as we're looking at this, you know, moving down the road, we'll get feedback on that night from parents to find out, do they think it was worth it? Do they like using the system? But we'll have to kind of consider how many teachers did have full schedules. And if that number, like right now, it's three. If that number is significant, we're going to have to kind of restructure parent conferences so we can actually have those scheduled conferences with a longer period of time without adding time on the teacher's school day. So stay tuned. We'll see how it goes on Thursday. And, you know, we welcome feedback from anybody on that. Last week, I didn't see any gray seals, but I did have the opportunity to represent Vermont at the NASSP Principal of the Year Institute. And that was an incredible experience. I was in Washington from Sunday afternoon to Wednesday evening. And during that time, had some great professional development with principals from all over the country, talking about everything from how do they do off-campus policies to how do they do proficiency-based learning. And that was a great experience in and of itself. We also were, had time with professional lobbyists who came in and prepped us for Tuesday. And on Tuesday, bright and early, we all went to Capitol Hill. And I previously scheduled meetings with all of our representatives. So, you know, I had a wonderful conversation with Senator Sanders and Senator Leahy, both of whom asked very specific, detailed questions about Brattleboro and the school. And also with Representative Welch. He was meeting and doing voting. So he actually took time during voting sessions to come out, meet me, and just kind of have a quick conversation. And he and I talked a little bit about how our demographics have changed. The main things that we talked about were things like Title II funding. We spent a lot of time talking about how Title II funding can support our students, and how it can support our teachers, and how we use that money for professional development. You know, we're allotted about $300,000, maybe 320 this year, which is actually less than we actually need. And one area of concern that I expressed with all of our representatives was the need to really focus on creating trauma-informed environments in all of our schools. You know, we have students that come from different levels of trauma and different types of trauma throughout their early childhood. And one thing we need to be at the high school is more responsive to, how do you create an environment that works with students in trauma, can take them where they are, and make them successful students and successful graduates, and then ultimately successful citizens. All of, all three representatives were very interested in hearing more about that. We also talked about DACA, and we talked about the Dreamers, and how that has impacted our school. And, you know, I talked about our students here at BUHS, how they are our students. And they spend a lot of time on our sports teams, they are in our clubs, they're in our classrooms. And so we spent a lot of time talking about that as well. But I was really impressed with all of our representatives, their familiarity with Brattleboro, and their familiarity with issues, and their support for education issues. So that was a fantastic experience. And, you know, kind of still resonates with me today. Also, this year, you may recall that last May, we shared a new athletic policy, a code of conduct. And as part of that code of conduct, and as part of our movement towards a proficiency-based model, we've separated out academic progress from what we call habits of work. Habits of work, you'll recall, include things like collaboration, participation, work completion, and general behavior. And, you know, one of the challenges that we were working with last year is helping teachers understand that they shouldn't be grading participation. And that no longer shows up on our transcripts. The reason I bring that up is, as part of that code of conduct change, we are requiring all students to have passing grades in all of their classes. And we're also asking all students to have habits of work scores greater than 2.0 out of 4 to be eligible for co-curricular, not just athletics, but for all of our co-curriculars. Last week, excuse me, was the first time that we assessed those. And one of the things we found as we talked to students and talked to families and talked to teachers is that we're really good at tracking the academic piece. We're really good at saying, you know, you did not get passing grades, you're not going to be eligible for the next week, and we're going to check your grades the next Friday. Habits of work was a little dicier, because we ask teachers to track habits of work at minimum once every two weeks. So we didn't feel like we had a big enough feel like we had a big enough data set to say to a student, you're not eligible. So what we've done is we've let those students who were below 2.0 remain eligible just for habits of work for the next two weeks. And then we'll assess them again. And they'll be assessed every week thereafter. And, you know, what I don't want to do is, because we're trying, we have a new process, I don't want to inadvertently penalize a student because it could be their senior year. And so I want to make sure that we get this process correct. And so we agreed as an administrative team that we're going to say, okay, we're going to give you kind of two weeks of probationary participation. We'll revisit those habits of work again and we'll go from there. So I don't know if people have heard anything about that. Also, one of our partnerships that we're in with several schools, with the New England Secondary School Consortium, is we're a member of the League of Innovative Schools. And every year, I come to you with this form and every year, a board member signs it, just to say that yes, we're going to participate. So League of Innovative Schools is where we get a lot of our faculty-wide professional development. They run a conference every year called High School Redesign. And, you know, that's where we got kind of the basic structure for our academies, our STEM Academy, our VPA, and our International Studies Academy. It's also where we had the first rumblings, hearing about our ACE period. So a lot of great ideas come out of our association with the League of Innovative Schools. So I would ask that somebody on the board, doesn't have to be the chair, kind of provide a signature so we can continue our association with that group. Last, but certainly not least, a little bit of hiring news. I am pleased to recommend for our PE position, which Mia Sweet is vacating, as of Thursday, I am pleased to recommend Ms. Kelly DeRosa for that PE position. Kelly has been a teacher at Gray Street School and Vernon Elementary. She left Vernon Elementary a few years ago. We had a great interview. Committee was Kate Margitis, Nancy Johnston, Chris Sawyer, and Lou Proxton. We had six people apply, three were interviewed, and Kelly clearly and easily rose to the top of that group. And so I would ask the board to approve the hiring of Kelly DeRosa for a one-year position for physical education. We'll open that position again in the spring. Tentative start date of October 16th. She does need to give, or 17th, she has to give two weeks' notice. So I would ask the board to approve that.
Is there a motion for that?
I would like to make a motion to hire Kelly DeRosa as the physical education teacher for the ensuing year for a one-year contract. And thank you very much.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go with your sanctions.
And finally, as part of our ongoing baby boom, Mr. Kirsten, the English department will be going on leave for the second semester. And we are beginning to look for an English teacher for the semester, spring semester. So if anyone is interested in serving on that committee, let me know. We're looking at interviews, probably, we want to give that person time. So we're looking at interviews in mid-October. So let me know if you're interested in that. Thank you.
Before we move on to Kirsten real quick, is everyone okay with me going ahead and signing the League of Innovative Schools partnership agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I'd just like to make a comment if I could. I think the school is very proud to have a Principal of the Year award given to Mr. Perrin. And just hearing a report from Washington, I realize that rather than just going down and accepting the award, you actually did a lot with our congressional delegation and got thought about. So thank you.
Thank you. They were very sensitive. And I will not, I will not be a lobbyist in my next career.
All right, let's move to Kirsten.
Thanks, Ricky. Good evening, everyone. Some news from our Future Business Leaders of America, CTSO organization. The officer team recently on September 26th visited Montpelier for their annual Fall Leadership Conference. And according to their advisor, Mary Beth Cornell, it was a great opportunity to get to know each other and get to converse with other leaders across the state. All the students that attended gave a synopsis of their experience. I'll just read one. And I do have some copies for everyone. Pass those around. This is from Gary Gay, Leland and Gray student. September 26th, FBLA took a trip to Montpelier for the Fall Leadership Conference. This conference was made up of smaller workshops ranging from VSAC to how to manage your money, to how to dress for success in the workplace. There is so much to take away from this conference and I'm glad I got the privilege to go. We had a very interesting inspirational speaker named Camille Yamine, who talked a lot about how we can empower ourselves through leadership and doing kind acts for each other. This was an amazing experience for a first-year FBLA member and for those who have been part of our club longer than I. So as you read through these, this is just a, it's a great organization and I can't say much, anything bad about it. The kids have a great experience all year long. And this starts off their year around the leadership roles they are accepting to pursue throughout the year. And hats off to Mary Beth Cornell. She's been an FBLA coordinator or advisor for many, many, many years. FBLA again will be hosting a blood drive this Thursday at the BUHS Multipurpose Room. That'll be held all day. Blood is needed, all types. So anyone out there in the public world, want to volunteer and give blood, that'd be great. The WRCC Dance Program had a great opportunity and a chance to dance with a masterclass of the Wonder Twins. They are a hip-hop dance twin group. And they, their names Billy and Bobby McLean are legends. They have worked with legends including Queen Latifah, Bobby Brown, MC Hammer, Public Enemy, LL Cool J, KRS-One, and many more. I don't know how, know many of those, but I guess they're popular hip-hop artists. The workshop covered movements of hip-hop, street dance styles that include, included popping, robot, and Mimi. It also included how to take these street styles and apply them to your movement of choice. They worked on rhythm patterns of the drum and added accents to their movements. And really, this was brought to our dance program by the Southern Vermont Dance Festival. And students had a wonderful time experiencing their, these dance moves with professionals. So our dance instructors really like to include the students on these great activities when they get a chance. And they love to come to Brattleboro and partner with us as well. Our construction and architecture class will be taking their students. Our new teacher, John Dematteo, is doing a fascinating job and has increased enrollment twofold since school has started. And he's a great addition to the WRC staff, right out of industry. And you would, you would think if you have a chance to stop by his classroom that he's been teaching for 20 years. And this is his first year ever in the classroom. He's taken the kids to Bensonwood Homes over at Walpole this Thursday. And it'll be a two-hour tour of Bensonwood Home Facility. And their services range from design to fabrication to timber frame and whole house systems. This is the second field trip that they've already been on in the industry. So the kids are really getting a great taste for the industry around that, where we live, and exposed to the possibilities for career pathways and jobs when they graduate, if they choose not to go to college or military. So kids look forward to that. And this year, as part of our pathway, career pathways initiative and allowing the community around us and all of you, we have partnered with the Stone Trust Company in Dummerston. And those of you that don't know what Stone Trust Company is, it's a, it's a drywall stone training center. It's only one in the United States. And they have an indoor training classroom. And it can run year-round in Southern Vermont, which is really neat. And they build beautiful stone walls without concrete. So we partnered with them and they would like to introduce this to our students. And it's part of a certificate training course as well that the students can obtain. And one of our parent professionals, John Harris, has been trained to be a trainer within this program. So we want to keep it in-house and also share with their mission and vision of providing certifications for our students. It's a great membership and it's a great opportunity for our students to, within the construction industry and also our horticulture and landscaping programs. And just to show our students the possibilities. And it's a really sought-out profession, especially in New England. And the individuals within this guild are sought out throughout the United States to do work, stone work. So it's a really neat hidden gem in Southern Vermont that we've had the opportunity to partner with. And that's all. If anyone has any questions.
Great. Thank you. Central office.
Nothing to add.
All right, great. All right, so after mission reports, there's nothing under unfinished business. Let's move down to new business. And the first thing under new business is the VSBA resolutions. Last week was the VSBA meeting. It was actually here in Brattleboro. And I know Ann was there, I was there, Bob was there for a big chunk of it. And
I was there.
Oh, yeah, we were there. I forgot. I'm sorry, Mike. Well, one of the things that we talked about was, well, first of all, the VSBA conference is at Lake Maury on the 19th and 20th of this month. And one of the things that will be happening there will be voting on the resolutions. And I thought, it just, for those of you that weren't there, it would be important to know what the resolutions are that the VSBA is going to be pushing for on our behalf with the Agency of Education and working with the Principals Association and the Superintendent's Association, things like that. So I just made copies of the resolutions for folks to have. You know, just so that those of you that weren't there will get a chance to see those. We also had a presentation from the VSBA around a number of things, but specifically around partially the political environment, the budget, and looking at things like our per pupil costs and things like that. And I think Nicole makes, got a little bit of pushback from some of us in the room related to that, that she was surprised by. But, because one of the things that wasn't really looked at or talked about was, that I found surprising is, they talked about, a lot about per pupil costs and things like that, but they didn't talk about results. And I think that that's something that, if you're not comparing the whole process, then you're, and you're leaving out pieces of it, that's doing a disservice. Because I think that, yeah, our per pupil costs are higher than other New England states, but our results are higher than other New England states as well. So maybe those two things go hand in hand. And that's a decision that we have made consciously.
That's true.
Something to think about. So I just wanted to give you all a copy of the resolutions for those of you that weren't going to be there. I don't know if anybody from, from the board is going to be able to make it to the, the annual meeting on the 19th or 20th, but these things will be voted on at that point. And everybody who shows up who's a school board member has a vote on whether or not these move forward. So just wanted to hear that.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Was there, there was an election?
There was an election for a seat for one of our, one of our representatives. And that was Amy Wall from Dummerston had been doing it. She ran and, to be totally honest, I can't remember the gentleman's name.
Dan McCrath.
Huh?
Dan McCrath.
Dan McCrath, yeah. From Dover, Dover, I think.
Marv.
Marv, yeah. Sorry. Anyway, they both spoke, answered some questions, talked about what they thought was important. And there was an Australian ballot about who got it. And he is one of our, now one of our representatives to the VSBA board. So he took over Amy Wall's seat there. And I didn't really talk about that because it seemed like such a quick, minor piece at the beginning of the meeting. It didn't seem as, to me, that it was as more, as is pertinent as some of the other stuff we talked about.
I think he kind of took everybody by surprise by putting his name in nomination.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, he ran last year also.
Okay.
Yeah. And it was a close election. Some of them, I guess he decided.
Is there anywhere we can get more of these, Ricky?
I can, I can check.
I think everybody on the board should have had it.
Yeah.
Copies.
Yeah, this was, this was a whole little booklet, the resolutions I photocopied out of my booklet for you all. But I'll, I'll check with the VSBA and see if we can get some more copies.
Yeah. That's some good information.
Yep. Great. So that was what, why I wanted to put that on our agenda, just so that people had an opportunity to at least read those before they voted in or not voted in. And then we talked earlier about the board meeting on Wednesday. Sean, did you have something?
I did, because I looked over the agenda. And under new business, there is going to be a discussion and perhaps a motion on Indigenous Peoples' Day as opposed to the traditional Columbus Day. So I didn't know how that's going to shake down or whatever, but I thought if, if there was interest, I could make a motion to, I will make a motion, that BUHS District Six Board are in favor of implementing the Indigenous Peoples' Day at the central office, or the WS-SUV Board.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
All right.
I think it's still the WS-SUV Board.
Yeah.
You're presuming the vote.
Well, yeah.
Or am I wrong?
No, no, I took that right off the agenda. It's the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union Board.
Oh, 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 WS-SUV.
WS-SUV, yeah.
Board.
Yeah, that's the board that's going to be.
Oh, right. Yeah, that meeting I want to say, yeah.
And I don't have, I'm not a voting member, so I'm not.
Is that Indigenous Peoples to the United States? Or all Indigenous people all over the world? Or?
I don't know the particulars. I think it's the Indigenous Peoples to the United States.
You mean this is the first one of Columbus Day?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's going to, at the meeting, the SCU meeting is going to be a resolution? Or how are we defining this?
I don't, I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I'm not 100% sure how will the agenda, how the agenda.
There was a little piece in Brattleboro Reformer and Joe Stahl said that it was, it was probably going to be voted on at that meeting. So it's something I believe that.
And I think the plan is that that would then replace Columbus Day in all of the schools.
That's right. That's right. Yes.
It would still be a day, there still wouldn't be school, but it would be called Columbus Day.
Could I, could I speak as a citizen?
Sure.
Not a cameraman, this is Ian Keel from Brattleboro. I just noticed that my bank is closed for Columbus Day, but the municipal center in Brattleboro has announced that it's closed for Indigenous Peoples' Day. So apparently the town of Brattleboro has.
Yeah, the select board, the select board of Brattleboro a number of weeks ago voted to, in the, in the town of Brattleboro to change observation of Columbus Day to the observation of Indigenous Peoples' Day as a town, townwide. So all the, so the municipal center will be closed, all the town offices, that kind of stuff will be closed for Indigenous Peoples'. stuff will be closed for Indigenous Peoples' Day on, a week from today.
I looked up the word indigenous, and the definition in the dictionary that I had said, occurring or living naturally in an environment. So, I thought that was kind of interesting, so.
So you're, could I hear the motion again? I'm sorry.
That I would be in favor of the BUHS District Six Board, oh, no, that the BUHS District Six Board would vote in favor of the motion on Wednesday at the Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union Board to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
So maybe urge the voting representatives to vote for it.
Yes, yes, thank you. I could be ephemeral.
Well, I'm just.
No, I think you're absolutely right.
Jimmy, I'm not sure if you can bind, I just don't have the answer, if you can bind the three voting members to vote in a certain way, because there'll be discussion, I'm sure, or there could be, that it takes any sort of latitude to, to take one's own action. And I just don't know, I mean, if, if, if.
Well, that's what I was.
So the urging, I like the urging.
You're going to have three representatives that are, I guess are going to be asked to vote accordingly.
You may be one of them.
So what exactly are we saying? We urge them to support the change to Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Yes, that would be my desire. The desire of motion.
No, I think that's fine, it's just that, if you actually look at Indigenous people, they're probably the poorest people in the United States, the most put-upon people in the United States. They're on reservations, and I think it's like, you know, it's somewhat slap in their face by giving them, giving them a day, and not really acting upon it and helping them out.
Got to start somewhere.
Have a holiday.
Yes, Ian?
Two thoughts on this. First off, although I support having an Indigenous Peoples' Day, I think it's ridiculous to replace a traditional historical holiday with something new. There's plenty of other days. Second, if we're going to have Indigenous Peoples' Day in America, that means it's a day for no one. There are no Indigenous people to America. There are just people that came here sooner, crossing a land bridge from Asia, as opposed to those of us who came here later on boats from Europe, so.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Should not, those of us who are voting members then not vote because we can't urge ourselves to do something?
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting thing. Because I think Russ posed an interesting question as to, because we're, we can't bind the three voting members to, to vote in a particular way. We can decide as, you know, collectively or not, it can pass or not pass Mr. Rock's motion. And I think that the three voting members can take that under advisement to make their decision. But I think that's the best way to go. Yeah, Sean?
I wanted to bring forward, in Robert's Rules of Order, to format, or to have a discussion. I'd be willing to take the motion off the table, since we've had the discussion, if that would be the pleasure of whoever.
Okay, thanks, Sean. And I think that that would answer Ian's question and Russ's question a little bit too. If the, if the motion was removed from the table, then the three voting members know that that was, you know, we had this discussion, and they, on Wednesday, will make their decisions accordingly.
That would be me in this case now, because I'm filling in, so I believe.
Yeah. I think so, yeah. Yep. So who are the other two that will be there? Yeah, Ian and Russ, that's what I, so the three of you will be voting on Wednesday, but remember, Wednesday is open to anybody. So thank you, Sean, for being willing to remove that, so we don't have to figure that piece of it out.
And also, it's not that you're welcome, we urge people to, to come to this one as well. I mean, you can come to anyone, and you should come to them, but this one is more of a formation full SESU Board meeting, so it may be good to make it if you can. If you're going to make one, this is probably a wonder, one to be there.
Good. All right, so that was it under new business. Somebody, we're going to need, I guess we're going to need somebody to step up, or else we're not going to leave the room. Unless there's something else to come before us tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move adjourned.
Move?
Seconded.
We've been seconded, all in favor? All right. All right, we are adjourned. See you all in two weeks, thank you.